Good evening, Wilson community members. My name is Tim Carter, Superintendent Wilson Central School District, and welcome to the regular board meeting on Tuesday, August 8, 2023. As I usually mention at the beginning, if you're here in person, you have the ability to do public forum. If you are not in person and you have a question, common concern, please don't hesitate to call the district clerk at 716-751-9399. And Mrs. Vermonde will get that question directed with word of comment and get that answer back to you. At this time, I will turn the board meeting over to our board president, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Superintendent Carter. Please stand and join me in the light of the flag.
I am certified under the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united. In it is the law, the liberty and justice for all.
Item 1B, approved meeting date is July 11, 2023. Can I have a motion?
No.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item 2, consent agenda for financial operations. 2A is resolved that the Wilson School District Board of Education approve the following items, B through H, in the financial consent agreement submitted by the administration. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item 3, special presentations. 3A is Title I presentation, Amanda.
So every year, I get a chance to talk to you guys, the leadership of them, about our Title I allocations that we receive for our average students every year. So we receive a certain amount of funds, and we, Carolyn and I, work together to write the grant for that to be approved by the state. So I have to present that to the board and the community at this time, every year, at the same board meeting. So that's what we're going to do today. And then along the borders coming around, we decide and show that you're interested in the nation. So the title grant is broken up into four parts. The first part is economic improvement. The second part is for, Carolyn, this is going to be allocated at all. The second part is for mentorship. The third part is for our DLL students. And the fourth part is for professional development in areas like that. We transfer all of our parts to Title I, which is a little tricky, how to do it. This basically gives us the opportunity to pay all the funds we have, they partitioned into the four parts into one fund. And so we had to draw on all the separate parts to make it tricky for billing. We're able to transfer all into one and use it to pay for our academic intervention service teachers, the elementary. That's a really simple system. We cannot transfer the Title III fund. That's the money we get for our VSL, teen and adults students. And if you want to look at, I talked about the allocation total is $240,361. That changes every year only by about $1,000. So that this year it is down by about $2,000. That year it was up by about $2,000. So that changes a little bit of the accuracy. So you can see that we took Title 2A and Title 4A and transferred that all in Title I. But Title III, we keep it in that pot. It's about $2,400 that we save for our students for supplies, books and materials. Our ENL teachers have been building a language library in a preschool and elementary school with books in different languages. And that's what they've been focusing on for the last two years. And that is something I just talked about. Title I is for reading AIS teacher aid benefits. It's a homeless reserve that we have in there. And then we also have to pay our private schools for any interest they may have there. Yeah, so like they, these are the type of things we want to do. And that's it. So if you do have any comments about Title I, Carolyn and I wrapped it up with getting very close, almost done. Hopefully by tomorrow. For years past, we did have to ask information from private schools and will submit that after approval this week. And then we start typically receiving those funds. Uh, whatever it's worth. You know, for me, hopefully, probably.
And if you have any questions on Title I or any special, let's get those questions in before.
I'm looking together, she can answer Title I. She might answer her cell phone when she sees mine up. She's in trouble.
I have it ready that the superintendent lot will share. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Schaus. Item 3B, federal grants update.
So in front of you tonight, I'd like to do an update on the grant. It is part of our responsibility to have that money that I do update you and the public about what's going on with those grants. I'm in the process of putting a lot of things on the website. So under the American Rescue Plan, you're going to see all the grants in all the subcategories. And I'm right now just uploading everything I can there so that anybody can see it. We do have a big audit going on right now that I have to have everything uploaded to her by September 1st. And then we're going to have a meeting and I told her to go over it all. So this is one of the requirements I have to meet in to give you some updates. So, um, SIRSAA and are the two big grants that have, I have put in amendments to the state. And what that means is changes we've made from the original application of the grant till now. So some things that I've adjusted in the SIRSAA grant, which actually is just wrapping up at the end of this year. I think we haven't still the September to spend it, if there's anything, but I think we pretty much spent it all. So some things that we changed from our original application was the English teacher, Katie Hendrow, that we had in the first year went Amy Sealy to the curriculum coordinator. I put her in the grant for that first year. AIS special ed teacher half a year in '21, '22, and all of '22, '23, I put into this grant. Adjusted salaries due to one of the teacher contracts settled and additional social security benefits to cover those new salaries. Some things that we subtracted were we had some money for Apex Training. The people that were using Apex as a software program that we purchased because we weren't sure how many kids we would still have remotely going to school. And we can remember all that happening. And we also thought it might be a good supplement to our AIS program that we are starting, new in our middle school, high school. But the teachers and Amy Sealy, they just kind of wrapped it on their own and they didn't need to be formally trained. In '22, '23, we also lowered the service of that software. It was determined that they did not need that for curriculum reasons for AIS. Only for that last two students that were going remote in that year. And in the coming up year, we're not contracting that software at all. To cover some of these increases in staffing that were added to this grant, I lowered the benefit covering those staff members and the general fund will pick that up. So in amendment number 2, to SIRSAA, which is also called SRT2, I added the professional day keynote speaker that we had come out last year, Tom Cody. If you remember this, Tom spoke to students, various groups of students all day. He spoke to our parents at night. And the second day, he worked with all the staff in the professional development day. Those costs were covered by the SIRSAA grant. And both of these amendments have been approved by the state, so they're all good to go. To cover that, I also decreased the TRS retirement cost. The general fund picked up some of that. Year two portion of the SIRSAA grant was completed and final report has already been submitted and approved. That was the Chromebooks and a few curriculum supplies. We made no changes to that grant. Like I said, I'm putting all of this information. A lot of it's already been there, but I'm adding to it this week and it's on our website. And each grant will have its own section. So for the American Rescue Plan, there's the four different grants included in that money. The big one was is called SRT3. That's the $1.3 million grant. So an amendment submitted and approved on behalf of the district, made some changes. We, additional building-based hubs have been added. We found that we really could use more than one in each building to make sure that those AIS teachers are not pulled out, make sure that those kids can get those services and those extended programs that we, you know, really worked hard to develop and put into them. We also, last year was determined that some of the kids going to first grade just weren't ready. You know, that's all based on, that's all from the COVID time, from their learning loss. And the elementary school determined that a pre-first was needed for those kids. And that's a great resource to use the grant for. B, Karen, we extended that to include all of our district families, not just our staff. So that was an amendment we put in. We purchased supplies for a drum club. Then at the time we did the grant, we weren't even thinking about a drum club. So we were able to get them up and running. And we also purchased quite a few new supplies from the STEM room at the elementary school to expand that. The piano that we originally put in the grant was much more expensive than I had budgeted for. So I asked for an increase there and luckily they granted that. And some musical instruments, we really fine tuned exactly what was needed, what they cost. You know, got a lot of good info from Rachel, our new band teacher. And we actually have those purchased and they're ready for her to start this school year. So the elementary AIS for teacher, I actually moved to the SIRSAA grant for some time, but you know, I'm moving money around to make sure I meet the requirements of various grants. There's certain requirements of so much of this, so much of that. Some things we took out of the grant that when we initially did it, we really thought we needed. And you go back to the COVID times, you know, we really thought we needed to buy a lot more room cameras, document cameras, things like that. And luckily, we, you know, were able to come back in person and, you know, we determined that we could use those funds in other areas. So the Apex software, like I said, we don't need that anymore. Some other software was removed from the grant and paid the general fund money. A small amount of cleaning supplies, $1,000, they moved out. And some TRS costs and healthcare costs are being paid by the general fund. So the other three American Rescue Plan grants, the learning loss grant will really be more focused this year. We do have one more year with that grant and a lot of the expenses are going to be coming out in '23, '24. They'll be for and after school. And the summer, we have made no changes to the original plan that we submitted, and those plans are going very well. So we don't see any need for any change on those.
And through this grant, that's those summer programs go through next. So it doesn't end with this particular school.
Please continue your work next month. So it's really important if anybody's watching this that we do want you to give us any feedback. You can, my email is on this presentation. It will be on the website, my phone number. You know, we're always making sure that your comments matter. And please reach out to us if you see something, want something heard about what we think we might need to do with this money. You're a very important part of what we spend the grant on. So we want to hear from you. And that's everything for me.
Well, remember, before we take comments, just for questions, I just want to make a few quick comments. One, particularly because of the size of Wilson, the size of our administrative staff and our central office, it's difficult to take on grants. It's not easy because the requirements for a federal grant are asking not only the application costs or the management of the grant, but making sure that all the details are filed. And the move for the federal grants always have an audit at the end of the 27th. So we're not out of the woods yet. If the audit comes in, they're going to say, you couldn't, inside, you can't cover that, you can't cover that. They have to be covered by the general fund. So we're still not out of the woods with these grants, but really it falls on one person, one office. That's terrible. So it's difficult, especially in August when whole districts get an audit too. So I keep that in mind when we talk about going looking out and taking a look at grants. If it's a one-off grant, that's something we can look at. But we did really deep in these federal grants. It was a lot of stress on the district. Obviously, this is the one we applied for and are receiving for was important for us in the COVID. But we had to keep that in mind going forward. The second thing is, we talked about briefly, and I've gotten a ton of emails from all the board members, probably our state district, on the Recov, the Recovs grant, which is the recovery of COVID. It's the next level of grants that the state is allowing districts to apply for, and it is federal money. And I just want to give a quick update on it. That is a 100% matching grant, which means if, it's a two-year grant. So if over the next two years, it would be for '24, '25, '26, it's after next school year. If the district decides to go for it, we would have a match. So if we want to put in for a $100 grant, the district could apply for $5,000, and then we would get the grant the other way. I know that it is also for learning loss and also for mental health services. It might be a way to sort of soften the blow of just some of our programs just ending. But I have to do some investigation. The last thing I'm going to do is add that onto our already stressed grant program that we're just closing out. All this, the grant is out. August 11 is the question and answer period. So I will be giving those question and answers. I'll send out a Q and A faculty. There's 11:15, it'll be myself or Carolyn will attend. We have chatted about the show, so if she can't, I will attend it. So 45:11 about it, and then I will be talking to the board. And if signed by September 1st, we can single up, put in for it. Okay, however managed or whether or not, we could even mandate a grant from the district. Just an option to go outside the district and have something else. I don't know exactly what's up or stuff, but one of the key things to keep in mind is we can't apply for a grant without us knowing that half the money that we're asking for, the district has to have. And we are moving into a year where we perhaps financial issues. So it's something we have to just keep in mind as we move forward. That's everything I have and Carolyn has on grant fees. What members, are there any questions?
So the pre-first, are we getting? We had, and this year is something that was just a one-shot. We have a one-year.
And I don't think they pay how they need it.
Now, it was based on that year, it was based on the number. We had plans of keeping it on, but based on the number of students they felt were, would be applicable for that. So those are kids that we wouldn't retain in kindergarten, they're not quite ready for it. It was just such a small number of those kids that wouldn't make the classroom. So those students would either move to first grade or would cut that.
Okay, we'll have a moment. Matt, there's some questions. Um, not necessarily about what Carolyn mentioned, but I was wondering if we should be thinking about a grant ranging for a district, one that possibly will receive grants, ready part plus the managing of it, to take some off Carolyn's office? And I know that's expensive. I did know OCSE had something that would be shared.
No, they don't have a grant rights poster. Nor is it something that we need to do, it doesn't follow with the OCSE services. But our companies that do assist with that, we've used them in the past. But a federal grant is not something you, you know, you can just hand it off to somebody outside because it's day-to-day monitor.
Right, well, I was thinking of other, other grants that may ha-ha us.
There, we do have some opportunities. And we do have, we used a company when we applied for the Cox grant two years ago for the videos, we used one side. So there's a company we have used in the past. That is a grant, we gave it. There's a percentage of the overall grant asked that we have to pay for.
Right.
We didn't get that.
No paying or bargaining.
It's not a shared service, we're supposed to handle it. But that, that's what asked before, it's the same as sharing SRO. You share the cross over district or OCSE paid a, you know, OCSE dated a SRO. They can't. There are certain services that OCSE cannot cover with OCSE. I think grant writing.
You know, state school boards, there's anything there. Maybe I'll look into that.
I don't, they don't have a grant that we have. But like I said, there is an educational grant right in place in this area. We've used it.
I was looking for a good one, but not so possible.
Oh, there are, everybody's looking for it. Nobody does that for free.
After this year, you know, normally we have seven grants that we pre-write for here in the district. We currently have 16 that I manage, you know, with the help of, you know, my staff too. So once the, you know, six of those are, are from first up. So after this year, you know, those, you don't know what's coming down the pike after, after those are done, right? We just don't know. And we had our 611, 619 that we had to take care of this year. Those were one-year grants. And we do have the Title I school improvement grant that we had for a couple of years that we typically don't have. So, I mean, we do, like my office does keep a light at the end of the tunnel of all the extra work. So once we get back to the normal, the normal grant, it'll feel, it'll feel kind of easy crap. Yeah. But I mean, I know you're talking about future opportunities and looking for other, other options. We, we would have some time to do that after this year too. So.
Anything else, board members? Okay. Item 4, A, extracurricular club. B, resolved that the Board of Education of the Wilson Central School District hereby approves the creation of an extracurricular club titled Elementary Jazz Club, effective September 6, 2023. Advisor stipend for the WPA contract for any year. The advisor position is filled, and that such club is active.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item 5, personnel resignations. 5A, accept the resignation of Casey Sweeney, food service helper, monitor, effective June 30, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item B, accept the resignation of Lisa Ryan, food service helper, monitor, effective July 13, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Fortunately, item C, accept the resignation of Amanda Schaus, Director of Special Education, back from St. Lata, 2023. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Aye.
Motion, carry.
I know when we have something.
Item 5B, accept the resignation of Judith Suppo, elementary teacher, back to December 13, 2023, for retirement purposes. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Just a clarification, accept the resignation. Ask. Item 6, personnel appointments. 6A, appointment of district residency officer. Be resolved that building principals will act as building-level district residency officers for the 2023, 2024 school year and no additional compensation. Hawk Delvich High School, Scott Matthews Middle School, Jason Welke Elementary School, all district residency officers refer directly to the superintendent of schools. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Since B, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Carolyn all various school district clerk for a term per term for the 2023, 2024 school year in the absence of the district clerk and no additional compensation. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item C, Brian Ferri is summer student intern to play up to 80 hours for the Wilson Academy of Finance NAP Track certification with a change in supervisor from Amanda Schaus, Director of Special Education, to Amy Sealy, AIS curriculum facilitator, at a rate of $14.20 per hour. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item D, approve the appointment of following community education instructors for the fall 2023 session, being held September 25 through November 20, 2023. Melanie Schultz, Lance Goodwin, Al Prokutery, Corey Malmstrom, and Matthew Mullin, Legend Group, Linda Feeden, Carol Heather, Daniel Byrd, Deha DeGromma, Nova Republic Central Incorporated, and E. N., Seale, Mirage Tours. Make-up classes if necessary would be the week of December 4 through 7, 2023. All fitness instructors are CPR, AED certified. Teaching crew, our program does not give the instructor employment status with the Wilson Central School. Is there a problem?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Item B, Paul Sealy is mentor coordinator for the 2023, 2024 school year for the WPA. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry. Item F, 2023 to 2024 mentor teachers for the WPA agreement. Jennifer Crave for Michaela, Nancy? Cam Daxwater for Madeline Austin. Margaret Thompson for Christina Boyd. Cindy Kylie for Madison Popey. Paul Sealy for Andrew Shaw. Scott Harvey for Wayne Martin. Chad LaFever for Cassidy Duff. Can I have a? Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion, carry.
I don't know if we may have a, but you said Wayne instead of Wyatt.
Right.
Martin?
Oh, Wyatt, Martin. Item G, Justin Imperial, Justin's. His Elementary Jazz Club advisor for the 2023, 2024 school year for the WPA. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item H, Emily Weber is Food Service Helper, Monitor, effective, um, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, with the salary and benefits at step one for the CSEA Cafeteria Agreement. Emily has not been your state fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item I, Michelle Yotes is Food Service Helper, Monitor, effective August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, with salary and benefits at step one for the CSEA Cafeteria Agreement. Michelle has met your state fingerprint clearance. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item J, Kyle Ryan is JV Girls Soccer Coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Fall Season for the WPA agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item K, Steve Brericks is five boys basketball coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Winter Season for the WPA Agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrying. Item L, Cassidy Geis is JV Softball Coach for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Spring Season for the WPA Agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item M, Bruce Roberts is unpaid assistant for the varsity field hockey for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Fall Season under the direct supervision of Coach Jamie Lush. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item N, approve non-instructional substitute employee Ruby Airhood. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item seven. Seven A is approve agreement between Wilson Central School, School District and Daniel Johnson to serve as administrative consultant effective July tenth, twenty twenty-three through the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year for assistance provided to the new elementary, uh, school principal. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrying. Item B, approve additional summer twenty twenty-three hours for the school. Psychologist Mark, Marcusson, I could see thirty hours at thirty-six hours per hour. Please testing, evaluation, and end meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item C, approve agreement between Wilson Central School District and Talents Spring through the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year to tune any piano in the music department at a cost of one hundred and fifty dollars per piano with an additional fee of thirty dollars for pitch adjustment serving. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item D, approve natural gas bid award for the period of September first, twenty twenty-three through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to Milkall Energy using the one-year option one pricing for the index-based pricing at point zero six cents plus the current month dinex per the bid that opened on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item B, approve the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year task work resolution. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
Can this one changed at all was once we vote on this tonight, is it written in so?
Um, no, I guess the board could, um, could approve something different at a later meeting, um, but it would have to be done in time for me to get the bags filled up.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item A, policies, eight A, first reading election of policy. Um, item nine, transportation, nine A is approved private parochial transportation request of Mrs. Christie Paddock for child academic sales Catholic school for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year. No transportation requests are granted based on the fifteen mile transportation limit and available seating exists on the bus. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. Item ten, conference request, ten A is approve conference request, B through B for the August eighth, twenty twenty-three agenda.
So moved.
Well, somehow she was. Yeah, sorry. There's a. Okay, I'm sorry. So we gotta change it to B through D.
B through E?
E through E.
Yeah.
Okay. So approve the conference request, B through E for the August eighth, twenty twenty-three agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carrying. And item eleven, conference reports.
First one's big. Uh, so board members, I attended the Rural Schools Association Board of Directors meeting and summer conference on October ninth, tenth, eleventh. Um, I want to first by saying thank you for allowing me to be part of the Board of Directors. It does require me to go to a few, uh, extra meetings for the Rural Schools Association, but I get to be part of the policy legislative group and get to hear firsthand what's coming down from Albany. And our Rural Schools Association gave a little specifically, you did speak to us a couple of years ago. Um, it's usually at the ground floor of what's going on in Albany, so it's good to have his here. Um, the conference was awesome as it was the year before, it was even better for me because I got to stay right at the Osage. Last year I got bashed out and I stayed twenty minutes away to drive back and forth. It just wasn't the same conference experience. Unfortunately, as a board member, I had to vote to, uh, for the right reasons to move the conference for next year because we're getting too big for ourselves. We can't fit in the Osage and there's not enough rooms in Cooperstown to take on this conference. So next year's summer conference is going to be in a classed, um, which will allow hopefully more people to be able to come. The, uh, couple of things that really stuck out, there's one particular keynote presenter, Tom Murray, that really focuses on culture and the importance of, of being personally, personally attentive to your culture, of not only in your schools, but also in your districts. So it's, uh, it was a good reminder. It's the second year they brought Tom to us and he actually was a good chunk of our conversation during our retreat last week, um, some of the work at time. There were three, I, I did a bunch of breakout sessions, but there were three of them that really stuck out. I did one talk about best practices of HR, I had to fire practices and the importance of hiring all of your staff members for their disposition, not just for their talents. Uh, and I thought, I thought that was a good reminder and it was superintendent the HR guy from Isbo that kind of did the, um, did the program and the HR director from, the leadership development director from Isbo's point four, who's, I saw his name on other presentations and decided to go with it that I liked his way he, uh, laid things out. It was all about leadership coaching and the importance of having leadership coaches. And like all the great, um, CEOs, all the great athletes have coaches. So you know, if somebody provides ideas off, somebody that can look at you and say, rip off that in the face, you can do whatever. So I think that's important to, and Isbo does offer a leadership coach program. Uh, let's see, I also attended the legal update. The Association Americans, the US Association of School or School Supervisors Association, but AAS, American Association of Supervisors. It's a national supervisory group and they did an update of what's coming down from the government. And then there was a legal update, very similar to some of the things that we've been. It seemed like they get the same ten topics and all the updates kind of follow along. So I heard a few of them, a number of them, but I appreciate you allowing me to go. And I did bring the program if anybody wanted to see. Any questions?
I want to thank you for all of your efforts.
Rural schools, I mean, there's a lot of great stuff. I didn't mention this, they do it, they do a dinner and lunch. We sit in a hall part of the conference and it's all gathered, so many people off in the cafeteria and stuff. And there's presented, well, lunch story, you know, or there's an awards dinner. The, the lunch on the second day, which should have been Monday, they had the order winners from the Future Farming in America, so they're all kids. And they gave their, their presentation, there's two of them that spoke. One had to do, uh, she had, she had a topic and she had to within ten minutes determine what she wanted to talk to about that topic. She had to present that topic. And then the second order actually had a pre-prepared. And so it's interesting, something I might be interested for our district to do some research. There are districts in the area that do that, that, that pays. Oh, Wayne lawyer and Luke barber has, with new thing, I know lawyer, barber for that. Magazine request, look into, I remember our films here, so maybe some of it. So worthwhile, worthwhile program. I'm just amazed that, this is the second year in a row I get to see you here to speak. It's just amazing, so thank you.
Great. Item B, uh, New York State School Boards Association, uh, twenty twenty-three, by virtual summer law conference, uh, trustees, Kat and Wilson, Wilson. Go first.
Okay. What?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Uh, so on Monday, July twenty-fourth, Tuesday, March fifth, I attended the twenty twenty-three virtual summer law conference. So by Isbo, uh, consisted of five main topics, for school safety. It was a year review, part one, so with new laws and regulations and a year review, part two, which is new court decisions on the rulings. It was an executive, uh, one of the executive sessions, one of the collective bargaining. Um, I thought they were all very informative, um, the information was presented anyway, it was very easy to comprehend. Presenters through each topic were very knowledgeable. The main takeaway through each topic that I found valuable, which came from where for school safety. Um, and this was presented by the Monroe District Board of Sides. Uh, presented and, uh, the lawyer and sergeant from the Monroe County Sheriff's. Um, the importance of district-wide safety plan, building level emergency response plans, and what we want to say should today and what most required to contain. The emergence of swatting calls, um, which all heard about. And, uh, the main issues there, uh, they have to be taken seriously whether they're, if they're called or not. And it could cost districts, you know, thousands of dollars to handle a series of problems and bone hardware and things to go. And although the, uh, the other main takeaway I got from that topic was the role of SROs, what their responsibilities are and what they aren't as far as, um, you know, handling certain safety. The next topic, the year review, the first one, the new laws and regulations, um, it's one of those new, in detail, new laws and regulations affecting education that might be affecting from last year. What I thought was most relevant were electric, electrification of building code. Um, it's one that, you know, feel like we can do in here, things the, uh, prohibits use of public buildings, new buildings, new buildings starting December twenty, uh, thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. But it does, which I did, you know, it gives an exemption for existing buildings and emerges power center. The Zero Mission Bus Progress Reporting, um, that the district has to report their, uh, implementation plans annually starting next school year. And, uh, UPK reporting requirements, which I thought were important since we're adding it on UPK platform. Um, also in that session was discussed, uh, bills that were awaiting governor signature and this and all. Um, the part two of that, um, that was basically new court decisions, uh, in school districts. Uh, some of the cases discussed, some special education, religious foundation, civil service law. That one I did find interesting, however, I felt that was more geared towards the attorneys that were attending the course. Um, there was a lot of attorney jargon that I didn't really understand, but still, it was informative to have to learn about this. Next session was executive sessions. Um, discussing on basis of meeting law, when the meeting law did not apply, rules, rules for committees, personal reasons for entering an executive session and actions can be taken in an executive session. Uh, this was for me kind of a refresher, uh, just going through my new board training last year, that was a little bit detailed. Uh, maybe, you know, I need for that a few times over the last year, so I've had some experience with that. Uh, but it was good to get a, a refresher for that and to kind of slip, I mentioned any of the rules for that. And then the collective bargaining is the last one, um, since I've had very little experience with this, I remember a year I found this very enlightening. Some of the important takeaways were the new challenges that remote instruction, uh, that emerged during COVID took post and how they met. The basic process of moving heating, who should be received, bargaining process, what information is required. And then, uh, one of our, some of our community issues that could pose challenges and, uh, I'll address them. Overall, I felt the summer law conference was well worth the time. I appreciate the fact it was split into two halfway sessions, since it was virtual. While I felt that all of these topics discussed are important and relevant to education. Topics I felt were most beneficial to me personally as a board member were school safety presentation, the year review, part one, the new laws and regulations, and collective bargaining. I just want to thank board for approving my amendments for this time. And, uh, I believe I, the knowledge that I gained will help me become a more effective member, uh, for the Wilson Central School of Education.
Okay, well, all of that and.
Did I cover it off to say that?
Yeah. Okay, so I attended the same virtual law conference, July 24th and 5th. Again, topics include school safety, a year review, new laws and regulations, executive session information. It was day one. A couple of points of interest in the safety, fun prevention strategy, which consists of identify, determine seriousness, and then make an intervention plan. I learned the difference between transient, which is not necessarily serious, and substantive threats usually planned out and needs to be addressed immediately. So I didn't realize there was like two kinds of threats, which that was interesting. It's also interesting to note that an SIR present during a student interrogation is problematic. It could cause legal issues, so just need to be careful how you use the interview process and ensure that it's all taken care of. One upcoming law that was identified is zero emissions laws. School bus regulation, reported activities surrounding this issue will be due by August 1st, 2024. For the 24, 25 school year, I have no comment on that. If you wouldn't want to hear my comment. The focus on day two was collective bargaining and new court decisions and rulings. With federal grant money coming to an end this year, a few tools were given to decrease the costs attributable to the tribe or a law. And it's important to have financial experts involved in negotiations, which of course we do, so that funds and balances can be put in understandable and realistic terms when discussing with a bargaining unit. All in all, I thought it was good information. It was good to have it over two half days. I personally prefer in-person, but this worked out for me this year. So hopefully next year I'll do an in-person one. I don't know, I get distracted very, very virtually. Thank you again for letting me take that and I think it was definitely worthwhile, two days.
Thanks to our trustee, county trustees, for having us. Now for the West New York Law Conference by Vice President Stewart.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to go. I prefer to be there in person because I feel we get a lot more out of it. Probably do have a pool of, most of them are lawyers, should sit in around here because they are students. A lot of them, a lot of them are different schools. And I met a dear friend of Mr. Parrot's, I've definitely been along with him. So anyway, on Wednesday, August 2nd, I attended the 2023 West New York Annual Education Law Conference at Salvatore's Plus Spa. He held speaker was Jay Warner and I loved to hear him. He is absolutely amazing and such a walk of knowledge. He's the Deputy Executive Director, General Counsel for the New York State School Boards Association. He reviewed the past year's most significant judicial and administrative decisions, as well as new laws and regulations affecting the operation of public school districts. And they went through from special ed, free speech, transgender, transgender, religious accommodations, assumption of risk when playing a sport, we don't need to stop. Think about as board members, or at least I would, board member conduct, renewal book bans. And then it went on and on and on. Then there was a panel discussion on the First Amendment and they also discussed censorship. And that seems to be a hot topic in schools, whether it be curriculum, textbooks, or renewable library books. And it's very scary to me how that's coming across in some districts. Next one was dealing with difficult Board of Education meetings. And I thought I better go to that, see what's going on. I can't say Wilson has ever had a real difficult Board of Education. Well, maybe when you were president. I was born, but during my time.
Yeah.
So anyway, I thought that was pretty good, but it kind of went through the same discussion of what the business, on the business of a real Board of Education meeting. And they really went back to talking about the policies, always go back to your policies and that's why it's important to have them. They discussed public comment, employee speech, as well as board member participation. How we do that. They also touched on the recourse, how many school boards respond on ruling people and or views of conduct. Much of it went back to having, like I said, board policies, as well as board conduct being approved by board expectation. Then I, then they talked about DDI, gender identity policies, what is mandated, what is not, and what are best practices. And I thought that was good because these are all led by lawyers, touch them, Ross. They discussed why transgender students' rights matter, the 2023 Gender Identity Amendments, teacher morality and different ways to come out at the school, along with some gender-based incentives, rules, policies, and practices. They also talked about legal protection for trans transgender students and their federal protections, as well as New York State protections. And then there was another one on updates in special education law, which I didn't catch up because I went to another one. But I do have copies of all of this if anyone wants to prove this information, which are the PowerPoint presentations, which are really very good. So I do have them, I'll lend them to anybody. You are the law, we can have them. I also picked up some information on the VPO, which has different activities for kids, like Sunday, October 15th, it's sent back. Spooktacular by the bottle of milk, I don't know. Yeah, okay. So I thought that maybe elementary teachers would like to pass these out or send out some of the information. I used to do that when I sent a weekly letter, home interference, I don't know. Then the other one is for the elementary teachers, K through, I think it's eighth grade. So and then I got enough to take to our both, I am a third, both public libraries, we will send you next week.
Okay. I'll try again, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I open our point cap?
Sure. No giant eyelids. I'm sorry, no giant eyelids.
Right.
Oh, no, I don't think they have. No, they didn't have one here. They will be after the conference and I go down, oh, they do have them. Hey, see, you're going to solve this one. If anybody wants a pad, I borrowed that from the university now.
Oh, yeah.
Another great. Here you go. And then I have a cute little.
Can you read up your audience?
Cute little pen, that's some. I'm too old. I can't get the marky of the teeth.
You're the best.
I have a bright, I have a bright. Oh, sure, go right about fifty.
No, thank you. First one, oh, good, thanks.
I have a few more accounts, I just grabbed. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Thanks, Kat, or sir. Right.
Sorry.
Item 13, Superintendent Record.
Well, after that, I don't know if I can give my report. I don't have any, I think it's to give to anybody.
Well, I know, you never bring us.
I have to bring this stuff back. I just want to start by just thanking our admin staff, our facility, clerical staff, central office staff, any of the teachers, houses that have been over the summer, getting us ready to close out the 22, 23 school year and then roll this in the 23, 24 school year. Getting out of the crunch time. Usually it's at the edge of the roll of October, or excuse me, in August. I knew summer, I knew summer was coming to a conclusion on the last day of vacation. I slept every night straight through to the morning. Felt actually beautiful in the last day of vacation. I woke up at two o'clock, I put the three o'clock, I woke up at four o'clock. And I knew summer vacation was coming to an end. So we're back into those patterns. But I just want to thank everybody for that. We have our official end of the summer. Weenie roast, hot dog roast, barbecue, picnic, whatever you want. And I will officially thank everybody at that particular, I just want to say that. Board members, you should know, because spending your news and notes, August 22nd is our goal-setting session. It'll let me at five o'clock. Just one quick change to that. There was going to be a 15-minute board meeting prior to that and then we're going to go fight 15 to room 18. We're going to start up in room 18 at five o'clock. After dinner, we'll move into our goal-setting session. We moved, we're going to have to call a special board meeting on the 29th. I'll give the message, news and notes, check availability. And with the hiring process of our special ed director interviews coming up, there's no way of closing those out by the 22nd. We want to have somebody in place soon as possible, waiting till the 12th of September. Who suddenly doesn't seem to make sense. So I'm going to move that big call, special board meeting for the 29th. Get a message out, make sure we get at least four, hopefully everybody will be here. And it's a pretty tight interview process, I'll review that another time. But I wanted to please get that out there, that we're going to do a special board meeting on 7 o'clock, July 29th, 2023. Mrs. Favano will do the required posting and communication to the public. But I wanted to, in this Friday's, start the interview. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parrot. Here's one basic comment, I would say. But again, it's, I think we've said it, this child's going to be saying. You've heard it throughout the community, we've, I probably heard it a dozen times, people throughout the community, throughout Wilson. And we should best of luck. You start for you, you know, your school, but best of luck, but you definitely need to pack on. Any board members?
Yes, we have two questions. I spent some time a week ago with a semi-administer from another district who has children in this district. They questioned why we use the Regents exam as part of our final average salary when many districts throughout nine county and throughout the area do not use Regents exam as part of the final average salary because of the I, she used words that I didn't really understand as far as how ludicrous the Regents exams are getting and how they become tougher for the kids, plus the kids that cannot take exams. And I know for a fact, my daughter won most of the exams she ever took because she could not sit and take an exam.
I understand what you're saying.
And this person really questioned me hard on it. And she said, can you find out any information on it? And I said, I sure will. And I said, well, if I get some information, you know, this is very limited, would you be willing to come and report it? She said, yes. So I just wanted an idea to get back to her, why we still use them when, well, the district, we don't.
No, I have no idea what she's saying. No district uses Regents exam, final average salary.
Salary or grade?
Now, for, you're talking about A, A P D R evaluation.
No, clearly said she said, or we students or Regents exams. That it pays for 30% of the final average salary.
Final grade?
Final grades.
Yeah, well, you can say thousand.
No, I didn't say seven. And I retract where I said, I'll start over.
Okay.
Since it's one of our myths.
If I will get, I'll get an answer back to you exactly what the percentage is. By this phase, you use them for, and you haven't followed in the initial, we use them for the evaluation of our staff.
Yeah, and I know that SED has come down and that I have a document from SED right here that states, does not require or recommend that schools use Regents exams grades as part of the calculation of a student's final average salary.
I'm with it.
Great.
You got a salary.
I'm in grade and she was very insistent on finding out why we still do it. And I'm sure that New Haven and a few of the other districts, where most of us are not using it.
Well, since I'm the high school principal's wife for the Orleans and Aggie County, we had to be in the second. Okay, but, you know, the two districts that I came from, both use Regents exams as part of the student final average.
Single grade.
Grade. I think if we're small percentage of it, most, for Wilson, off the top of my head, I'm not going to be able to tell you. We do use it, I don't really think it's one fifth. Twenty percent, twenty percent of final average grade. When I was in Wee Field, it was considered one fifth of the grade. So it was the first four, second four, the third four, fourth four, and which is 10%. So it's one bit.
Because isn't it really comparable to a final exam? You don't really have a final exam, so this is your final exam. Right. Exactly.
But in other districts, I mean, other courses that aren't Regents courses, you both. And it's in the degree that the Regents exams, exams have changed with years. You think it might be good for our district to look into not using them for the reasons that I stated as far as some of the kids just can't pass them and some of the kids that have a 90-some average that can't take tests? Will, it will drop their average?
I don't know, I have it on a desk, we have pretty high test. Yeah, the Regents, and the most. And again, at any point, if there's questions, we can take it to the curriculum committee or a policy committee, share decision-making team, take a look at. Certainly could be something we can review this year, but if it's never come up internally, doesn't issue. I mean, I've not heard it. Like I said, our Regents exam pass rate is really high. We had a lot of our kids, and we scored high Regents exam, we scored so high that when they graduate, then we see honors based on that. Some of those honors are in that choir, we just have a high percentage of our kids who pass Regents.
Okay, well, I will get this back to her.
Yeah.
And she will have, and she's welcomed to that kind with myself and Mr. Yelvich. So we'll review the process with her and take her concern with the service.
It fits, and she's saying that the Regents exam, they do not pass of the final average grade and it deserves her, was the first one for them. So it's just 25%, 25%, 25%, 25%. You know, what was the animal?
I don't know what the picture is on the other ones, but they're not using the real district. Okay.
I know, I know.
That's normal. Okay, question number two. If I brought this up earlier to you, I think it's still time to put it up.
Believe. This today or early?
I, I was on town and didn't get in till this morning. And I read the news and notes and I almost fell over when I saw the tax rate increases. A dollar twenty-nine for thousand for Porter, seventy cents for thousand for Wilson. And I looked at, and I, and I know it's not Carolyn's fault. It's because of the equalization rates, we're looking at that. But now the 29 is one of the highest tax increases we've ever had for thousand. And what, for, for, uh, Wilson, in the last 10 years, seventy cents is the second highest. One year we had a 99 cent. We've also given that money in years, we've had a decrease, we've had. But my question is, how, how early? But my question is, how, how early did we realize that Cambridge was going through a reassessment? And how much this would affect the tax rates in the four towns that are within our district? And is there any way, if we had prior knowledge of this, we could help alleviate this increase by more use of fund banks? To soften the blow, I'm not sure, I know our tax rate or our tax increase was six hundred and sixty-one thousand, fairly give or take. And Carolyn, do you know how much, uh, hundred thousand dollars, say you put a hundred thousand dollars from our reserve funds into that, how much that would lower? Like, is it ten cents, a thousand, twenty cents per thousand?
No, I don't know, I would have to work on it.
Yeah, I think it serves as having the official answer that question and off the top of my head, it's something we can get an answer for. What it means.
Because I, I just feel that we owe it to our taxpayers to keep a better eye on what's happening. A dollar twenty-nine for thousand, it, you know, it doesn't sound like much, but when you're on a forty thousand dollar a year income and you own a home, it's a lot of money.
Like I said, Carolyn, what I'm about to say, who will ask the answer for your presentation?
I, and my, I guess, is this written stone? Could we possibly change this before we want the tax rate? If, if the desire is there of the board.
I mean, we, we have it at, at least one time, whatever. So it's obviously something we could get, we'll get the information for him, make sure all the boards.
It is, and I have a lot of, we're not going to have another meeting until. And I think that's too late, isn't it, Carolyn?
Oh, absolutely, yes, I cannot get that quote out.
So there's nothing we can do about it now. What I, what I'm trying to say too is, I think we better have a little bit more pre-knowledge on this stuff and become to the board instead of on the Friday before we have to pass the law. I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but I, I just feel that we owe it to our taxpayers to, to look out for them a little bit better in this area. So, okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, there are issues, board members. Here are none, uh, public forum, any members of the public that would like to come forward, address their concerns, please step forward, state your name, address, and please keep the evidence respected. Here are none. There is need for executive session, so I have a motion going to the, and I, and executive session for personal. Individual personal matter, and there will be no, uh, court action filed. Then motion going to executive session. Second. Questions? All favor.
I.
I propose for an executive session.